I'd like to call this meeting of the Pension Board, December 23rd, to order and ask if we would please rise. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All call for order, and roll call.
Kathy Henry.
Art Cagney.
Tom Stinkwitz, Kevin Cunningham, and excused absence would be Kristin. And you have in your packet the minutes from November 12th, 2019. As soon as everybody has a copy of the minutes and has read through, entertain motion to accept those.
I have a question.
Sure.
The actuarial equivalent of the pension, what is that? I know what it is, but in this case, what would be actuarial equivalent of our pension?
I don't know. That would be a calculated proportion of what you, the person who's getting paid up. They take the actual top three years of salary, they combine those together, you get an average, and then what they do is they multiply it by a given multiplier on the pension. So the actuarial verifies everything's okay. So that's usually what it is.
Because it says or, a pension.
And that was what it was on that night.
For the actuarial.
Whatever the person will take, a lump sum or the.
Okay, that's what it is then.
With that, any other comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 12th of the Pension Board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. I'm only going to abstain because I wasn't a member at that time, so I was not really well abstained with that. Okay, so we go to item D, which is the new business, and that is election of officers. So we entertain motions at this time, other individuals as a slate, looking for Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary.
I don't know how it was before, so.
What you can do with individuals, or a slate doesn't matter.
Yeah, before it was Kathy was Chair, I was Vice Chair, and forget who was.
Virginia.
Virginia.
Entertain motion for Chair.
I'll move that, Kevin Cunningham.
Second.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations for Chair? Hearing none on closed nominations, all in favor of Kevin Cunningham for Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, and we're looking for a Vice Chair, do we have a nomination for a Vice Chair?
I nominate Thompson Woods for Vice Chair.
Second.
Second, then.
Okay, any other nominations at this time for Vice Chair? Hearing none on closed nominations for Vice Chair. All in favor of Tom Stinkwitz for Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Now we're looking for nomination for Secretary. It's pretentious.
Nominate Art for Secretary.
We have a nomination for Art for Secretary, we have a second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, any nominations for Secretary? Hearing none, closed nomination for Secretary, all in favor of Art Cagney for Secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All in favor, anywhere down to do it for the officers. In your packet on item two, as I just found out, put together the Pension Board 2020 regular meeting schedule. But this will be six forty-five. This is our first meeting of the Board of Selecting slash that night's thing for the pension. Unless anybody has any changes, I'd rather move it around. But this is what was being proposed. Any dates here that conflict with anybody that, right now it looks pretty good?
No, I think this will work for holidays. And the Magic Double Force will work in WPC, not WPC, this will work in the meeting.
So everything's in line. In that case, I entertain a motion to accept these scheduled meetings for 2020 for pension.
I make a motion that we accept the meeting dates as presented for the Pension Board for 2020.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
With that, we go to other, I don't think we have any others because we've almost put any paperwork recently, so.
Only the other question I have is with Louisa, I know there had to be an adjustment because she agreed to turn her second for retirement, and I know that she said that we would have to go to Pension Board to adjust that. So I didn't see her on the agenda for tonight, so.
Yes, she passed that in a little later, but we can make an adjustment to that at the next meeting for her, so we can actually. So Louisa will be discussed at the January meeting, that way she'll fall in line for the February start of the payout.
So would that be a February meeting?
You're right.
No, because we have a January meeting, because that was approved at last year's.
Correct, that's when we started, if they were.
So we have, hold on.
A special one for January?
No, it's January 13th, 2020.
Okay.
Because we did this last year, approved it, and will be in January, so.
Okay. So we're okay with that. And at this time, we have others, so there is no other. Open form, anybody here for open form? At that time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye, to adjourn, six forty-three. Seven o'clock, I'd like to call this Board of Selecting meeting for December 23rd, 7:00 PM. All in favor, please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vasco Roll Call.
Kathy Henry.
Art Cagney.
Kevin Cunningham. In your packet, you see that on item C, there's the December 19th minutes. Taken time with those over, if you have any questions or changes, please say so now. Why does it ask for a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of December 19th.
A second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go to item D, which is public comment. Anybody has anything they'd like to say now or later? If not, we can go right into the next item. Whole business, which is E, discuss a town contract with Nixon Communications. We have entertained a contract with them for the remainder of the year for $750. We're going to go over the parameters of what should be and what should not be on that informational packet for people to sign up. We're coming up with a draft, which will come onto the front page of the town website, so that you'll know how to sign up and what items will be on there. And we'll be asking you to look at that over the next few days. It gives you similar items that the police have right now for updating the status. So we have special meetings, or town meetings, or budget meetings, we can actually put those out there. But it is another way to communicate with the public, so for $750 for the rest of the year, that's not bad on them. So just to mention in that discussion, I will be meeting with the Board of Finance soon to talk about line item transfers and making sure that we put line item transfers for where money's coming from, to pay for other items such as this. So sometime in January, I'll be meeting with the Board of Finance to give them a full list.
So who will maintain that, Kevin, who will upload the information?
All right, Kyle and I were talking about that now, which myself, Kyle, will make sure we take appropriate actions to come up with a guideline of how we're going to do it and who's going to be doing it. So that's the starting point, we probably had a third person on there, but right now it'll be just Kyle himself and bring it forward. Item F, we'll go through the new business, the first thing in your packet is F1, which is consider act on the tax refund from the tax collector totaling $93.20 as follows, Matthew Grant for $93.20.
I'll make a motion to consider an act on the tax refund for Matthew Grant for $93.20.
A second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, we'll go right into the next item. As that passes, number two, discuss the RIP for the update for the town highway roof. You see in your packet, number two. You'll see that there is limitation to bid, we do plan on having a pre-bid reading on the 30th. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we didn't get that.
So the town has got product specs that are out there, we have, we're obtaining, and we're looking to see if we can get a pre-reading on this on December 30th at 9:00 AM. It's for the Plainfield Public Works Facility on 47th Unity. And we're going to make sure that the bidder has fully completed to sign a bid form, there will be sealed bids, and they'll literally be marked and indicated in the bid package, and they're going to receive everything until January 8th at 11 o'clock, that bid opening is going to occur, and we'll look to go forward from there. In the bid process, we may have to make some adjustments based on the weather, we'll give some leeway to the high bidder, I'm sorry, low bidder, and make sure that we process this so we can actually get something up and moving. Any discussion on that, we're all set so far? Okay. Item number three, discuss the updates to the town audit. We had a, I'm sure you have nothing there, yeah? All right, I don't think I made copies of this, but I will definitely share it with you. I've been working with our acting finance director on the audit extension. I've asked him last week to get ready for the audit extension for, to January, because we know there's no way with the holiday schedule coming, they're going to make it in time, and I'll definitely make copies after the meeting for this. So he wasn't in last Thursday, I asked him on Monday to complete the function, wasn't in last Thursday, wasn't in today. So again, we're looking just to do a quick piece of paper that puts it into the state of Connecticut that says we're looking for an extension. Markham is the auditing company, they have to sign it, Ron has to sign it, I have to sign it, and we have to just send it over to the state of Connecticut. He promised me an email this morning that he would take care of it for, by the 26th. But we've had some issues in the past, so I just want to make sure that it is completed, so that's where we stand on it right now. All right, and we're going to discuss, I'm sorry, I know, you know, three, item number four is discuss the current town budget for 1920. What I'm doing here is, you have in your packet at least the, what it stands as of today, for this past. No? You don't have it in there either, because I gave it to someone.
The last one I have is from.
It was in the box.
The 18th.
It was in the box?
But that's from the 18th.
That's the most current, yeah, that is the most current. Yep. So what you'll see there is, I had a department head meeting, and I go through the department heads, talking about every one of their line items, because again, I want to make sure that if we're low in an area, I understand why we're low, did they buy supplies ahead of time? Are some issues concerning, like legal notices, we've got a lot of legal notices already done for the year. I already talked to the Board of Finance Chairperson about making sure we have enough money in there to remain for the remainder of the year. So we'll do a line item transfer to catch up on that. Anything that was underneath, and required a comment back from the department heads, that were able to give me the answers on every one of them. So as I go through this, I will put together a line item transfer for our next meeting, so that we can have the go to give to the Board of Finance. So they just, look at this, the number that I'm looking at really is 65577, that's above where we should be at this point, based on how long we are in the year. So technically, we're 50% at this point, or anything underneath 50% really is something to start working on very early. So we're not too bad off, and we do have some areas where we actually do line item transfers from, so we're not too bad right now.
What do you think, Kevin, what, or is the contingency on the.
There are two areas right now, there's contingency, we have enough money, contingency to offset that. There's another, we did not hire yet the highway supervisor, so we still have an acting highway supervisor. So there's another position that you have at this point, we calculated roughly what a payment and benefit would be, and it's roughly $8,000, it would have been for a payment for salary and benefit, so we put that at half, because it's only been half a year so far. So we still have $40,000 available there. And what is left in contingency, which is about 20, legally, 20,000. So we have enough money, we will be all set for the rest of the year, unless something else comes up. So why don't you even have the copy of those, so that you at least understand where we are at this time. And any input is also appreciated, so if you see something that they look out of whack, just let me know. I plan on doing that at each of the department meetings, making sure that we're staying on track. Any other discussion on that so far? If you were mindful of item five, which is discuss the updates of the ADA compliant town hall doors. You're probably going to notice, there's nothing in that section, only because we're still in a work in progress mode. If anybody has been trying to come to the town hall for the past few days, if you notice the cones and the tape that are going up the ramp. If you worked on these two doors so far, you can see at, just right here, there's the ADA compliant doors, an area where you actually push into the door area with the handicap push mode, and then the doors will open. The only thing we're working on still is the ramp, because it has to be a particular ramp to allow them to come in from the outside threshold inside to the town hall. And they started working on the door downstairs to the back, to down. So hopefully, they can get this completed very soon. In the meantime, I think we'll be able to probably take away the cones and the tape, so you can still get in and out the doors, not a problem for a push. But we are hooking up the electrical at the end. So the electrician comes in at one point, make sure things are set up electronically, and then move forward.
Are they still doing the two push, not anyone on the outside?
That was the intent, that's why you see that little electric cabinet up there on the top, that's what the intent is. So there's still work to be done.
That's just from one side, like Rex.
Well, that's the thing, we're going to look at what, whatever's on the specs to see how we can get out. Yeah.
Because I know the Rex center, you push it, only one side opens up, both doors.
Oh, yeah, one at a time, one at a time.
The other two stay closed.
And we'll work to completion on that based on the specs, make sure it works. So again, we apologize to the public for the inconvenience, but you can understand why we have to stage it one piece at a time. Any other discussion on that? Nope, okay, how about item number six, we're going to be discussing the updates in planning and software. Board of Education has already checked in with multiple of the towns around us to find out what the better software package would be to utilize for its upgrades, Infinite Solutions, I believe is the name of the company, and they're going to be going forward. Now, there's a good thing, I printed it out. I apologize if something did print out earlier. But I don't have one. Just because I don't have that information, I will definitely bring it to the next meeting, which I share with the board, so. Because I had a comparison between the two software packages, I had an understanding of what we'd be able to do, and by the way, the town would like to have the same infinite solution software as well, because that way we're all in sync, in case they send us down a file, we can just pop right in and go. Again, look at the pros and cons, there are some cons to it, but one of the other pros was the fact that we don't have to pay for this until July 1st. And that's what the other thing that the Board of Education was looking at to say is a very good follow-up, we don't have to pay for it until that time, so it won't be this year's budget.
I think the other thing that's beneficial from that is, wasn't it nine other schools, Kevin, that were relevant in that package? So that we always have somebody that we can look to if we need it.
Absolutely. That's why a lot of the area towns around us do have it, the training portion of it's free for both town and Board of Education. It helps us to, again, get in sync with everything, so we don't have to worry about a training issue, everybody should know from both finance departments what's going on. Can I mention one other thing, now we're on that subject, and I apologize for not bringing it up, but back in the town audit process. We're kind of scrambling to make sure we get up to date with everything. So at the last Board of Finance meeting, it was mentioned an issue with maybe hiring a consultant. But at that meeting, I was sitting beside Ron Bush here, and Ron actually came in and said to me, if you don't mind, I'll offer to come down to help the town. So that's one extra hand we don't have to pay for, and I thought that was a very good offer, we talked about it briefly today. So Ken, I believe, will be on board with that, so when we get to that point, we can actually add another person helping out. He's been very, by the way, Ron Bush has been very in tune with what we've been doing, so a big thank you to Ron. So I will bring item number six to the next meeting with all the documentation on that. Item number seven is to discuss the meeting with representatives of GNW Railways. I met with representation of all four of the fired districts, and also the Paul Yellen Fire Marshal. We had three representatives of the, actually two, one from GNW, one from GNW, and also a member of the state DOT that came to the town because they wanted to actually share with us, you know, what they're doing, and what things hold us back. One of the things that pulled us back, or the whole package, I believe, but at least I can discuss it. GNW Railroad is a concern with safety, and they did come to the table and meet with us. A lot of things that they were talking about were their experiences of what they can and can't do for the town of Plainfield, because there's federal guidelines, that's the biggest problem. But they were gracious enough to meet with us, they talked about the issue with safety at the different rail stops. They also talked about the issue of how long it takes to actually do switching in the center. They were willing to at least talk to us and work out some solutions for the future, especially when it comes to the timing. I mean, they can't really promise anything, because again, there are quite federal guidelines, so. But they did say they're going to go meet at the next, is it, chief, was it the next four stations they're going to meet on January?
Yeah, the four town trainings in the G and M are, they're going to provide a rail safety course for us.
Yep. And there was also the, each of the stop numbers has that blue Connecticut DOT number, but they shared those, that information with us as well. So I think if anything, we got out of the, I got out of the meeting, it's basically they're opening up a line of communication, they're willing to at least listen to the issues that we have. The problems that we're going to be having, and facing, and the fact of what's the highest priority to fix. And from their perspective, there's things that are higher, even though we've had some major issues with one of the rail zone load bridge. We're put into a queue, and unfortunately, the queue goes by volume. If you think about it, we're down at Bridgeport or New Haven, they have a lot more volume, traffic going across a railway area, so. It's something we're still going to continue wanting to ask them, thinking, okay. And there was one other thing that they've talked about. That is the way that we drive up and approach a rail, but right now, you've got the nine-inch round lights, they're changing to 12-inch, and they're going to make them LED, they're also changing the striping for the reflective on the actual arms, where they are in diagonal position now. They're going to be at least horizontal in the future. And that's one of the things, the other thing they talked about was, when there's an opportunity, we may be able to get some of those road reflectors that go up before we hit to the rail, the ones that actually fold and bend in the wind, but the road reflectors will help to recognize the fact that there's a rail crossing coming up. So there's also some things that they talked about with doing the annual review of the rail, so we'll see if we can continue with them for that, for all the stations that they cross at, we're going to see about the, there's also the cutback of the brush and vegetation. And if there's anything that's out of line, so if they've already done their vegetation cut, they will, we call them and say there's some more things growing up. If you take care of that, they will actually listen about that as well, and take care of it. So again, it's, I would call it an initial meeting, productive for information, unfortunately not productive for having direct action. We'll continue that line and open it up and see if they would like to, you know, continue talking.
Cunningham, if they're going to take care of it, Ross Chris has a big problem with load bridge, right?
One of them.
Vision.
Sight line.
So if you do that, that's good.
I was going to ask if we could also consider, I should have done this up front, but consider adding another item onto the agenda, let's call it item number nine. This is, so we can discuss a motion and item to vote to send to the Board of Finance, a Board of Education budget adjustment. So entertain that motion to add that item nine onto the agenda, to discuss and vote, to send the Board of Finance a budget adjustment for the Board of Education.
I'll get that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Why was it number nine? Number eight, we have discuss an act on a new town finance director. I've given you all the packets of all the applicants, please forward, and it's a pretty extensive packet. I ask that recognize Board of Finance Chair, Tom, he was in, sat with as many of those as possible for the interview process. And at the end, we sat down afterwards and walked through step by step on who we thought would be the best candidates, and eventually got to one. Have the packets in front of you? I want to ask if there's any questions?
There is, how many interviews, Kevin, did you do?
I think it was eight altogether. Yeah.
And there are not all the resumes here for all eight?
I think there's seven, is it seven? I think so. Oh, there, there was one at that town last.
I have six.
Yes, six. Seven, three, four, five, six, I have seven, I'm sorry, seven.
I have six. And Ron's. Yeah, I have four.
Okay. Because we did that prior.
Four is not, but I do have fours, okay.
All right, so that would be the other one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so that is.
Any discussion about the packets that you got?
I think we have some good candidates. I am concerned that our old finance director is in here. I'm going to stick to what I had said previously regarding the old finance director. I think that because of the past situation and the issues that we had, I think it would be detrimental for the town to bring her back in. She, I'm not going to lie, she knows finance, but she's not a strong team player as far as working with the school, the finance department. And that concerns me, because when you look at the budget for the school, that is the biggest part of our budget. The police department is, again, a big part of our budget, and I think that you need to be able to have open communication and work with them. And I know that that was difficult in the past, so I have a lot of concern regarding that, that she is brought back on.
Okay, that's good. You have candidates that you like, candidates you don't?
Me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Let me see if I can address some of the issues, and just to be open about it. All right. Tom and I went through the interviews, and I know you couldn't make all of them, Tom, but Tom and I went through the interview process, and we were very clear about what we're looking for in an objective. It's someone who has a strong background, and somebody who has the ability to pick up where we have, right now it's very difficult, to be fair, very difficult. So the strongest candidate ends up being the person we had before, and I definitely. And I definitely hear what you're saying about something to deal with that, because you can't have issues that you mentioned before. So I'm trying to be fair about it, but I want to make sure that we're protected. So there is also a level of a 90-day probationary period, which we're actually thinking about making it to a six-month probationary period. Gives us more of what to do and what to say. So those are two of the issues that I heard, I heard you actually say that and read through it, and I wanted to make sure that the town is protected, so that's what I did. Drafting up that contract also puts us in a little better position, because right now, there's a few positions in the town of Plainfield which we're always follow their contracted rules. And that's something we have to eventually change and get to the point of these are their contracts. This is one of them, definitely, because it's very important.
So she will have a contract?
That's the idea, yeah. The other thing is, you had a separation agreement, and I just wanted you to know that under the separation agreement, there is an item in Article number 12, which talks about, you have to open it up. And so that, I discussed that with the new attorneys by opening up the contract in that regards. And we can definitely do that, as a matter of fact, in opening the contract, getting rid of the elimination of number nine. I was the one who actually initiated a conversation, saying, "Would you consider coming in for an interview?" So I wanted to do that, only because I thought that was the best candidate at that point. I thought that would be appropriate to do so, so.
I do have some concern though, because our new attorney was actually the attorney. That was for the past finance director, so I think that's a conflict of interest to save.
I hear what you're saying, and I've already gotten a letter to that effect, saying that we have, there is no conflict of interest, and that they have parted ways at this point, so there is no conflict. So that came from our attorney, and Kelly has already agreed to do that.
Well, I still am going to stick to, and I do think that we have other qualified candidates who would be able to step in at this point and be able to get us through what we need to. We did interview other candidates who have municipal experience, who have a strong background in finance, and I think they would be very beneficial to the town of Plainfield. I think it would be starting with something new and the past issues. I just, I just don't think it's going to be beneficial for the town. I know that you have the last say, but I think that at this point, you really should consider moving forward with a new finance director. I know the review board that I had before the reelection, the review board had chosen someone with a very strong background that they all agreed on. Those were members from the police department, the school, and the town. And I just, I just think that it's going to hurt the town going backwards.
You want me to weigh in?
Sure.
Okay. Kelly Bashan has 13 years' experience. She's good with the BOE, it shows it in here. She works, she's respected, I can tell that by the letters. People didn't want her to leave.
When you say she's good with the Board of Ed part, who are you talking about, the Board of Ed? Because she does have.
Working with Board of Ed, purely.
She does have a conflict of interest with this superintendent and with the business manager. So to me, you can have a good relationship with the Board of Ed, but you need to have a good relationship through the finance end of it. So that concerns me.
Do you mean a conflict of relationship or a conflict of interest? Could you say conflict of interest?
So, she has a hard time communicating with them, is what I found in the 18 months that we worked together. And that, I saw that with my 18 months working with her and speaking with the superintendent and the business manager. So that, I'm not saying that she didn't get along well with the Board of Ed, but the Board of Ed is an important role, that you have to be able to communicate and work with the finance. And they are the finance.
And listening to what Kevin says, informing a chain of command, where it goes through him, so this doesn't happen.
You can have a chain of command on, but you cannot change how a person is going to interact with someone. And I'm, I just know that there's an issue there. And it's not only with the town manager and the superintendent, it's with the police chief. And that is going to cause some serious issues. The last conversation I had with Kelly Bashan, she told me she will not sit down at the table and ever have a conversation or work with the chief of police. You cannot, you cannot have that wedge, you can't. It's a team, you have to work together. If you want to create a strong budget and a strong team group, you have to all be able to, I always say it's okay to disagree, but you, you have to bring it to the table and talk about it.
So this is previous, and may I ask you, Kevin, because you interviewed these people, how does she stand on this, working with these two people?
She understood that, like I told her, that we're going to understand the issue of chain of command and that I would be the person talking to each of those departments that she's had problems with in the past, that have been highlighted as issues. She didn't feel she had major issues with them, but there was pointing out issues of concern with certain parts of their budgets. So I said, "Well, that's not going to happen in the future, we're going to make sure that we have a better line of communication and be able to work as a team," and she had no problem with that.
So she had differences on a professional level, not a personal level whatsoever?
Absolutely.
It was just professional, the way they were doing their books? Because I'm looking at it, Kathy, is we go to the next person, okay, here, and we, and we don't know what she's all about, for this one, okay?
I don't know what you're talking about.
The next person that would be in line, okay, has eight years' municipal experience, doesn't say.
So, what are you stating is the next person in line?
To me, would be Veronica Calvert, okay? Because she's got eight years' municipal, but we don't know how she is on budgets, we don't know if she works with BOE, we don't know if she's liked by Board of Finance or anything.
Well, I can tell you.
I'm basing it on what I've seen, okay, you know her in a different light, you know her, working with her, okay? I know her from watching her with the Board of Finance, and she was always spot on. She had her information there at the table, she could look it up if they needed something. I don't see that with the current finance director.
Oh, but you only agree.
I'm looking at things that, where this person is going to be a good fit for us. She has the experience, she has six years' clean audits, okay? She's been through, I think, 11 audits herself, and she hasn't called a consultant in for this. We don't know what we're going to get with this next one. She says nothing about audits, she says nothing about BOE experience, she's only eight years' experience.
Well, I can say that I interviewed with Cora, and I interviewed with one other one here. And the one that the review board had suggested was very strong was Orla, who has municipal experience, working with Board of Ed, doing audits. I'm just, I'm going to stick to what I said originally, and I think it would be, I think it's going to be difficult for the town.
Are we going to go to that last, that one you just discussed? She has certificates from Ireland, okay, in finance, not from this country even. She has five years' experience, no formal schooling.
She has formal schooling, I don't know where.
Just as cautious she took in Ireland.
No, she has, I believe, and I don't have all of that because it was not in the package.
So this certificate, she's got, yeah, this is right here, you have it right there. Right at the top. Right, right at the top.
She originally, and I had left all of that with Kevin, had done a letter with everything in it. And she has worked municipalities since 2014. She's been in the, in the country, yes, she was shot in Ireland, but if you look at her history, she has a strong finance background, she has the municipal experience.
It says nothing about BOE in here, in the Town Thompson.
Well, I think that's what's difficult to find is that you did not interview with these people. Some of them I did.
Why didn't, right.
And I think that's why it's important, just like I had stated with the town clerk, that you need to be a part of that interview process, because there's questions that you can look at this, but you can have questions that this is not going to answer, so. And I don't feel like not being a part of the interview process, that either one of us, I will not speak on this, Patricia Ann, because I didn't interview her or her Kayla. All I can do is go by their resume, and they have strong resumes and a strong finance background, but that's why I think it's so important to have a board do that, because there are questions that you can ask. In a resume, you cannot list everything, and that's what's so important about it, so.
I beg to differ on that.
That's okay.
You write a resume, you should put everything that you do, because somebody's going to read that resume and have to base whether they even want to interview you off that, off that resume, correct? I, I mean, Kevin's, he's been interviewed every one of them. Which some of these, like the last one that I have in here, who's just fresh out of college, not even finished college.
If she finished college, she's going for a master's.
Well, right, she's, right.
All I'm going to say is that it's, it's difficult to have other board members on because that constitutes a meeting which you have to put to the public. That's why if I was, is there, that's why I was to ask either of you or both of you, it would constitute a violation of Hawaii without having it as a warranted meeting to do that. So that's why it was just myself and Tom. And Tom and I, again, at the end of the whole process, sat down and talked about each candidate, and we made our, agreed upon, we both agreed upon the same candidate. So I definitely hear your concerns, I'm going to do my best to keep those concerns in check for the town of Plainfield. But I also think this is the best candidate for the town of Plainfield. It's something that I think is, we need to go forward on, so at this point, I'm going to entertain a motion to authorize the first amendment to amend the separation agreement and release which removes paragraph nine for non-reemployment and vote to approve of the hiring of Kelly Bashan as the new Town of Plainfield Finance Director with the anticipated start date of January 6, 2020. Fair second?
I'll make that motion.
You make that motion, I'll make the second. Any other discussion? Hearing not all, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
All right. Now we'll move forward to item number eight, no, I'm sorry, nine. When the Board of Finance started this process of making sure that we had a certain amount of cuts from the Board of, Board of Vegetation, the number 114 came. 114,000 was an adjustment in the state of Connecticut. We have to make sure that we keep those numbers equal to what the state of Connecticut has for its MBR requirements. So 50,000 was cut at first, and then, so out of that 116, so it left 64,000. The Board of Education actually voted the other night to come forward with $64,000 worth of cuts. Everything sounds great so far, except that as a state statute, Connecticut General Statute 10262-J, talks about the process by which they make the cuts, so they align with the state of Connecticut. And there's a section in there, which is the fifth section, that talks about how the budget implementer makes sure that we, when we reduce something from the state educational aid, that we make sure that we approve it through the town meeting. So what we have to do is, even though they made a cut, we have to actually have a town meeting to verify that cut is okay with the town residents. So what we're going to do is, I would ask and entertain a motion to send the budget cut adjustments for the total 114 of this 64,000 to the Board of Finance so they can approve it and then set a town meeting for the town residents to approve. Want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to send it to the Board of Finance, so the Board of Finance can set a meeting to approve the Board of Ed cuts.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Yeah, one, one question, is it a referendum town meeting?
It's, I believe it's a town meeting.
It was?
Yep.
Passed that?
Yep. We have plenty of time to figure that one out, you know, in the next Board of Finance meeting, because they're going to be meeting soon just to talk about that. And they do have a regular meeting set, but they're going to be doing a tour of the police station, so that's why they'll have to have a special meeting just to talk about that. And if there's any line and transfer cuts, it'd be interesting. So a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And other than that, other, do we have any other discussion for tonight?
The only other thing to go back, Kevin, I know you said there was going to be a contract, so bringing her back in, will she be treated as a new employee because of the payout that she received when she left?
Right, so she'll be starting from scratch with all of those items for sick and payout, or sick and vacation time. So she'll accrue based on the time of service here.
And pension, as far as pension, will she be treated as a new employee and not receive a pension?
Same as.
As she did in the past.
Same, she should be able to contribute to the 457, okay? Yeah, and then the pension multiplier, though, goes with the title, remember how that was all, a few years ago, there was four people who were saying that they weren't as part of the, any union, therefore they had a different multiplier? Well, she's still part of that, but she has, gets the lower multiplier at that point. So she still has hours of service, and it was accumulating currently. I'd be more than happy to share documentation for the contract with you, so we look it over. I'll leave a copy for everyone. Other than that, we have, again, we don't have it listed here, but I'm more than welcome to take public comment at this time if anybody has anything to say.
Travis Harmon, Mississippi, Connecticut, the NICSIE program. Last year in budget, Kathy had put in promotion, social media promotion, so forth. Are we tying that in? Because it's great to put it on the webpage, but as most people don't really seek out government services, and there has been on social media, people complaining. Are we trying to tie that together to push it really hard to get people to sign up?
We're actually trying to broaden.
Okay.
So we have right now a Facebook page, we have a town website. When items occur like a budget, we're going to get more signs to put out there for voting for budget referendums for town meetings. We're looking to obviously use the NICSIL program. We're looking for the next step after that, which would be for people who would like to sign up for notifications via email, so that's another format to which they can get information. I want to make sure we click things out there, especially the town budget, put it on to Turnpike Buyer, a full page, so we know what the numbers are as well. So we're trying to broaden those horizons. One of the other things that just came up recently was one of the fire districts that wanted to put up an electronic scrolling sign, which I thought was a fantastic idea. And as long as we have town information on a scrolling sign, we're good to go. I'd like to do the same thing for the police department, so, because it's centrally located in the town. I would encourage all of the other fire departments, you know, when they want to talk about that, to discuss that, so we can actually do that as well. It helps everybody out. So it's just an, I'm calling it extended, because I want more things to happen. Anything else?
Kim, Melvin, Mississippi, I just had a question in terms of the electronic signs. I know it was brought up in past meetings about using the school signs for notifications. Can we still look into doing that as well?
We're going to, we are going to look into it. There are some issues concerning the ordinances and how they're written, so I'm going to be going back to the planning and zoning to talk about those ordinances to see if we can actually modify some of those things that are documented in the zoning rights.
I agree.
I guess I have another question about the audit.
Yes.
We are getting very close to the end of the month, where we have to have that extension filed. What is the very last day that we can file it?
It's always, always the end of the month.
Okay.
Yeah, but like last month what happened was, it was due by December 1st. December 1st happened on a Sunday. So we had to have it in their hands electronically on that Friday before. So we're coming up close to the same issue where we have the 31st, it's a Tuesday, and that's going to be it.
Right.
So we have to make sure that we get that in place. It, it really doesn't take much on. It, it really doesn't take much, honestly. It's, the form is there, we're just changing the dates and re-sign up and putting it electronically to the state of Connecticut. We get a receipt back from them saying it was accepted or not. And to be honest, last time it wasn't accepted. And it was because the wrong auditing company was put on the form.
Right, I, I guess that's what I'm concerned about. We, possibly the very last minute, and a simple error like that happens, just making sure that-
Right. I contacted, I contacted them immediately. We fixed it, sent it out, and I verified by phone that you've received it and it was approved. So, I don't want that to occur again. If I have to take it to the next level myself, I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sean Peters.
Yes, Sean.
My question is, um, when the finance director was terminated, she was given out of sudden. Has that been completely paid out to her?
Yes, it has.
How much money did we lose? How much does that cost us now? Because basically, we got rid of her because of the old administration didn't care for the way things were done. Now, you've decided to basically wipe out what they've done and hire her back, which is fine. But she's getting a lot of extra money now, isn't she?
Well, if you think about it like this, she would have gotten it either now, like she was paid out, or when she retires later on. The money would still be available at that point. Only thing is now, what she's doing, she's starting from scratch on second vacation, and that's really it.
That's all she got payouts, her second vacation time? She didn't get us, uh, any type of, uh-
No other payouts?
I just don't know, taking a look, that's all. But that's your decision, not ours. The cut was made, it was clean cut, we had the option to move on and try something different. We're going back to the way as we were, uh, if that's the way to go. Again, that's just my opinion.
Okay. Fair enough.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Matt Gray, Ann, Lucy. Was the motion regarding the school funding issue sent to the Board of Finance, was that motion for the Board of Finance to vote again on it and set a date? Or to set a date, because we did previously-
We'll verify the sixty-four thousand dollar cut and to set it forward too. Because you have, do you have a list yet of the actual, you, the other night you got the items to cut? Yeah. I mean, you have to really refresh the public's memory, and that's one of the things you can do at that meeting, and then set a date for that. Tom?
Tom Singletary, Board of Finance. One thing I'll just mention as a clarification to what the Board of Finance requested at our last meeting was that besides this formality, which we're going to do now, sending it to town meeting, getting it voted on, we also requested from the superintendent of schools to produce some type of official confirmation letter from Department of Education saying that basically, we're in the clear. Just to be a hundred and ten percent certain that, you know, we did all the process, the procedure that they expected, and that this, of course, doesn't come back to bite us in some way down the road like during bite season. So, he assured us, won't be an issue. He said his point of contact, I believe, Mr. Chamberlain, Department of Education, he would be in contact with. And at some point down the road, we will bring that up at a Board of Finance, meaning the actual document saying, now that we followed the process correctly, it's done deal.
I believe that after that town vote, I think you would be all set at that point. Anybody else? All in, entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll adjourn.
I'll second that.
And all in favor to say aye? All right, we're going to be asking if you wouldn't mind keeping it down low because we have one more meeting, we'll be thrilled too quick. All right, we're going to call this, uh, Water Pollution Control meeting for December 23rd open. And we'll call, do a roll call for, right now is, sorry, roll call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is going to be a tough one for the next one because it says approve minutes on July 22nd. And, um, an abstention from 2/3 of vote. I mean, I've read through the whole thing, I don't have a problem with what was listed there. So, I guess at this point, have you read through the whole thing, so?
Yeah, I was here. I wasn't on board, but I was here.
Okay.
Yeah, he has questions.
So, I'm going to see approve minutes from July 22nd, 2019 meeting. Entertaining motion to approve.
You should approve the meeting minutes from July 22nd, 2019.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Post, I'll abstain just because I wasn't there at all. Uh, item D, which is new business election of officers. Again, we're going to go through the whole process. Chair goes chair and secretary. Entertaining a motion to, um, put forth a chairperson for the Water Pollution Control Authority.
I'll make a motion to, um, make Kevin Cunningham chair of the Water Pollution Control Authority.
Second.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, motion to elect officer for chairperson is closed. All in favor of Kevin Cunningham to chair, say aye?
Aye.
And post, move on. Vice chair, entertaining motion for nominations for vice chair.
I'll make a motion to, um, make Art Ed be vice chair.
I'll second. Any other motions for vice chair? Hearing none, I'll close the floor for nominations. All in favor of Art Cagney as vice chair, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And post, so, next one, who would be secretary?
Make a motion there. Make Kathy secretary?
Okay, I'll second that. We're hearing no other nominations for secretary, we'll close the floor for that. And I ask that we take a nominee of, entertaining a motion to make Kathy be secretary.
We already did.
Here we go.
Vote.
Yes, I'm here.
Let's see, vote.
Voting on the secretary. So, entering approval for Kathy to be secretary of the Water Pollution Control Authority.
Aye.
Aye.
So, we have the minutes on the election of officers done. The only other thing is the approval of the minute, uh, meeting schedule for the 2020 regulars' schedule. You have that in front of you?
Yeah.
Are there any conflicts with anybody?
In January, one, from last year.
Okay.
So, there's a January meeting.
If not, I just have it.
I think November 23rd is when I want a question or do you have this one? Anything?
Four.
Yeah, it's okay.
Thanks, Kathy.
No apologies.
January 23rd, January 27th.
So, you have the regular schedule for 2020 in front of you. Entertaining a motion to accept.
I'll move that, we accept the meeting schedule for 2020.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. With that, other, no other business at this time, I haven't had anything going on for Water Pollution Control Authority. Not yet, other than to say that we are in desperate need of hiring staff. I did just receive a letter from the state of Connecticut. It says we are not in compliance with staff. So, we have to call them and write the letter as well, so that they can, since we're working on it. We're desperate to try to find them. So, it's accepted.
Did, did you hire a mechanic?
Yes.
I know that they-
Yes, just hired a, a second. So, this one, hopefully it'll work out, we just talked to them.
And I know that it was difficult trying to hire somebody with an operator's license.
Yeah.
There was just, yeah, there was just nobody on it.
Which is a recurring job, pays thirty-four dollars a month. That's a great-
But that's low.
Well, I know, that's, that's what we have to talk about, what we can do to help them out, to- I'll talk to the state of Connecticut about that to see, what do we do to bring it up? Don't you tell us? Because we're trying. We're definitely trying. That's, that's the only thing under other. And unless the public has anything for Water Pollution Control Authority discussion items? Hearing none, motion to adjourn?
I'll make that one.
I'll second that.
And all in favor to say aye?
Aye.